Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the April 12th meeting of the Sykesville Mayor and Town Council. This meeting is being held via Zoom US teleconference. In order to give public comment or listen to the meeting, you can call 1-301-715-8592. The meeting ID is 894-634-49970. And the password is 250425. Once you enter, you will be placed on mute. And for to get started, let's pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In the silence. Okay. All right, and then, uh, public comments, they are limited to three minutes per person. Please alert staff that you would like to make a public comment by pressing star nine to raise your hand. And then keep in mind, uh, items that aren't on the current agenda, uh, likely have to wait until a different time, but, are there any public comments, Carrie? Okay, all right, so our first item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda, and this consists of the minutes from March 22nd, um, 2021. Any comments, questions about the?
I actually do have, um, regarding the minutes for March 22nd. That evening, I asked for the nominations to be read, uh, with the first and second as a motion, as it's dictated in our charter, in the hopes that it would be read into the public record, but that's not showing in the minutes. And so I'd like to table the approval of the minutes until that's updated with that information, please.
Well, can we go ahead and approve the minutes with that?
I'd, I'd, I'd like to see the updated revised minutes before we approve them, please.
Okay, all right, then, uh, we'll approve these at the next meeting, I guess.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, you got it. Okay, so we'll table the approval of these minutes until, um, the next meeting. Okay, and then, um, next item then is the, um, new business item, and this is the introduction of ordinance 2021 dash oh three, and this is for the fiscal year 2022 budget. So, um, really tonight, what we wanted to do is get this, uh, introduced publicly so we can start the timeline and then get it out to you guys to, you can take a look at it. And then, um, obviously, the bulk of the discussion, um, on it will be at the workshop, which we're scheduling in, um, for instead of the next town council meeting. So that'll be on the 26th, right, Joe?
That's correct, 26th.
So 26, so, but is there any initial questions, uh, or concerns or thoughts about the budget? Well, first of all, I guess we should introduce it, right? Do we need to do a formal inter, is there any vote on that or just?
You, you do have to vote for the introduction, that's correct.
So let's do that. Let's get the introduction vote out of the way. So, um, I'll make a motion to introduce ordinance 2021 dash oh three, the fiscal year 2022 budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that it is introduced. Um, any comments or questions or thoughts at this time that you want to get out there?
I have a question request when we do our, um, meeting, next meeting, our retreat of, I guess, to review the budget. Can we get a comparison of what we had last year to what we're requesting this year? I know in the, you have given us for future years, but I didn't see what last year's budget was.
Sure, you're just talking about the numbers itself. You don't need like the last year's comp plan or the budget book. You just want the, you just want to compare the numbers?
Exactly, yes.
Perfect, okay, I absolutely can.
Yeah, and I think, uh, hey, Joe, I think that was kind of done, I think Aretha did that one year, and it was just like the top line item. I mean, it wasn't itemized all the way down. It was, you know, kind of in departments, so maybe if you want to look back a little bit at some of the documents. I think that's what you're talking about, right, Anna?
Um, yes and no. I know that we had the, um, future budgets expanded in our packet. I just want to know what last year's was.
Yeah, I can give you, yeah, I'll definitely do that, and it'll show like the last three fiscal years, current fiscal year, and then what's proposed.
Okay, you, you don't have to do it that far. I'm just looking for last year.
I already have it, it's there. It's just a matter of sharing it with you, that's all.
Okay, great, we'll get that out. Any other questions or comments? Okay, um, all right, so then our announcements, uh, and reports. There will be, uh, obviously what we just talked about, the council and budget workshop on Monday, April 26th, and this too will be held via Zoom. Uh, we do have some volunteer opportunities available on Spark, Board of Zoning Appeals, Police Auxiliary, and the Crossing Guard. You can email town@Sykesville.net for more information about volunteering with the town. The election is May 4th, it's coming around the corner, so mail-in voting applications are currently available on the town website, um, at townofSykesville.org or at the townhouse. And the polls will also be open on May 4th from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and hopefully we have, uh, safe voting for one way in, one way out. So, please vote. And then, uh, staff updates, so I guess we'll, uh, start with you, Joe, any staff updates?
Really, I just wanted to give an update on the, uh, Warfield meeting that we held on Friday. So, as most of you know, we did hear about several, uh, public meetings or, you know, citizen meetings that the Warfield folks were holding, so we did request one, uh, for, for us on Friday. And I, I guess, the bulk of the information that we received, I don't, I don't know if it was really all that surprising, and Stacy or Mayor, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it was basically there, um, explaining to us that the, the current market simply doesn't support what's, what's proposed out there, or what the, what the current approved plan is out there. Uh, so they are looking into, uh, higher density residential, uh, as an option to, to, to propose for, for at least the, uh, the historic structures out there. Some of the out parcels, they were not specific about, though, they are looking at residential options for those as well. You know, again, I think the biggest takeaway is, is, is just simply that regardless of, of what's proposed out there, if it deviates from the, uh, the current approved plan, they do have to go, they basically have to start their process all over again. So there, there will be plenty of public input, there'll be plenty of, uh, opportunities for people to learn and, and see about what, what they're proposing out there. But it doesn't seem like they're, they're pursuing the, the, the current plan at all. They're, they're working full-time on trying to get, um, funding situated, and it looks like, uh, they're going to be proposing some sort of, uh, higher density residential. So, uh, obviously stay tuned for that, and, and if we get anything specific from them, uh, regarding those types of proposals, we'll, we'll certainly share that with council as soon as possible. I will say that, uh, they did get Senate Bill 885 passed, uh, that was the catalytic tax credit bill. Uh, it does provide, uh, tax credit, uh, benefits for, for historic or historic properties such as this, up to $15 million worth, so that did pass the, uh, the House, I believe just on Friday. And it is on the governor's desk for signature, so that's, uh, potentially, uh, some benefit to the Warfield folks, uh, assuming they, uh, you know, do receive that, that tax credit, uh, funding, uh, but it doesn't change, uh, their, their, um, their proposals on, on more residential for, for the area. And then we're still working with them on the administration of the $750,000 strategic demolition grant. Uh, so I think I mentioned before that we are working on a subrecipient agreement for them. Uh, we still not worked out all the details. It has a lot to do with, uh, how the, how the money will be reimbursed, uh, either to the, the, uh, contractors or, or to the, the Warfield developer. Uh, once we get those details worked out, certainly that's a document that's going to have to come before council for approval. So, uh, just wanted to let you know that we're still working on that. And that's, uh, that's basically the Warfield update. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Joe, just for clarification, I, I don't, I didn't, I, I thought I heard you say that Senate Bill 885 passed, and that it would not have, or did you say that it would? Because I'm sure it will have, uh, an effect on, um, the way that the restoration of the historic buildings takes place.
It, it will absolutely have an impact.
Yeah, okay, I, you, I must have caught the N T, N apostrophe T must have fallen off, I, I didn't hear you.
My apologies.
No, my bad.
You know, a, any kind of state or federal funding for, for the Warfield project is certainly a benefit, uh, you know, again, as, you know, one of the reasons that, uh, the, the current master plan out there doesn't, doesn't work financially is because of the expense that goes into, uh, rehabilitating those historic structures. So if they can get, you know, tax credit funding one way or another, uh, it certainly helps close that gap.
And, and just to be clear and transparent about this, the, the, their, the reason why they were working so diligently on getting this bill, this catalytic, um, tax credit for the historic tax credits passed, is because of what you just said, but also the plan is hand in hand with their desire to infill the historic buildings with apartments.
Well, I don't think the tax credit is, is key on the apartment piece.
It's hand in hand with their plans and their, what they're claiming to be the only way they're going to be able to rehabilitate the buildings. That was made clear to us, uh, in that meeting that we held with, with them on Friday.
Right, so, so I think the important thing that to note, though, is that all this will have to come back through the proper channels of the town. Planning Commission, public, public at the town council, um, and I don't, uh, you know, so it'll be very, don't worry, there's going to be lots of, uh, public input on this topic. And, um, yeah, it's a shame that they didn't sort of vet out this whole plan before they've done all this other stuff, but having this work done will hopefully help in whatever plan we're able to come to an agreement as a town with them, if it needs to change. And that's the other thing, we don't have a plan yet. So it's, it's fair, while they talk a lot, it, it, once the plan hits the table in the street and the public can look at it, then we'll have something to chew on and go back and forth on, right? So, so it'll be, uh, yeah, but stay tuned for sure, and, and it's good that, you know, hey, people are at least getting their antenna up about this, so that's a positive thing, and the town will do everything we can once some sort of plan comes forward to make sure everybody has plenty of time to learn about this and get involved.
Two, two questions, uh, first, just apologies for being about 30 seconds late to the discussion tonight. Had some difficulty with connectivity. Two questions, first one is, is the 750 still going to be used for park renovations? Or, or is that going to change potentially with this, uh, bill change if it gets approved? Could it also be that they use the 750 to build this other plan, which would take the money away from park renovations? I just don't know the answer to that. And then, did you hear at all a potential timeframe for when the, uh, plan would be made available to the town or to the public? Or when, when are they thinking to get this in front of folks? Thank you.
Yeah, and there, there was no timeline given on when they might come forward with some of these proposed changes. I think they were, uh, working to get that, uh, the catalytic tax credit bill passed, and, and now maybe they'll, they'll spend a little more time on strategizing exactly when that plan will be submitted to the town for consideration. Uh, but again, no specifics on, on when that'll be coming forward. As for the 750, there, right now, the scope of work is still what we approved, you know, several months ago, which, which was specific for the wetlands mitigation plus some infrastructure work, uh, on site. So th- those park improvements are still very much, uh, part of, uh, what that 750 can be used for. If they decide they want to shift that somewhere else, that's not, uh, that's outside of that scope of work, then they would have to come back before council and ask for, uh, again, another change in that scope.
Thank you. Yeah, and one of, one of the things that I think the issue is, is they're trying to avoid taxes, um, so that may, but I don't think that our charter permits us to do the things that, the, the switch that they're trying to make. So, but we're, we're, we're trying to figure out, working whatever we can so they can preserve the most amount of money to use for their project, so.
Just one follow-up question, is there a plan for them to come before the council in any time in the near future? Are we going to wait to see their plan?
Well, we've, we've asked them to come before council and, and give updates. However, I think they're always a little nervous about what they're disclosing publicly, which is, is their prerogative. You know, I think the, the, you know, a public presentation is, is always, uh, you know, good for everybody, so people can hear straight from them exactly what they're proposing or what they're planning. But there, there is no schedule to, to have them come, uh, yet to a council meeting.
Thanks. And one o- one other thing to point out too, because I know there's been some discussions about some of the surveys and things, and we put zero value on those surveys, just so people know, because the town has not, except for any town surveys that the town has commissioned, you know, those surveys, we don't have any information on those. So, it's very frustrating to get information that we don't have any history of where it came from. We can't verify any of the data, so it has very low values. I just wanted people to be aware of that. So, if you, if you hear about them in these presentations sharing numbers of things, the town has not commissioned those surveys. And if we need numbers and surveys, and we're, we're, we'll, we'll order them ourself, and we'll use that data.
And to pile on what you just said, Mayor Shaw, likewise regarding the surveys that, that information that's been shared thus far from the developer, the sample size, whether commissioned by us or anyone, is so, is not statistically significant. It's, it's, it's very small as compared to the total population of Sykesville. It, it'd be like having a, you know, a, a, a poll amongst a family of 44 and getting one person's, uh, input as to where we're having the family reunion, so that's, that's kind of the way I'm looking at the numbers that they've presented.
Right, and I, and I tend to agree with that, yeah. So that's kind of what, that's kind of where we are, I think, as, as a town with the, with the surveys and the numbers. And so, if, if it ever gets to that, I think the town will be comfortable ordering our own set of surveys, if, if that was, we deem that necessary, and then we'll have the, you know, the information that we order, you know, and get. So, just to put that out there, but, okay, any other thoughts, comments, questions, anybody got anything else, or?
I just want to thank you guys for, uh, meeting with them. It, it's appreciated. It's a big issue in the town, obviously. And I just thank you for being willing to meet with them and listen.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jeremiah, and I think Ian will agree with me. It was good that, that the two of us were there, um, listening to the same information simultaneously.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I thought that was appropriate as well, because last thing we want to do is have different people getting different information. It'll be messy. So, yeah, so I appreciate that Stacy too, attending and doing that, yeah.
Yeah, no problem whatsoever. I, I, I don't, I don't like the idea that they're trying to make this a, a political conversation, to be honest with you, Mayor. And that's why I thought it would be good for us both to be there.
Right, me as well, and I, and the timing was a little weird, so, you know, so, but here we are, right? So, it'll shake down on the other side, and then it'll, you know, everybody will get, participate, you know, so.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, whereas I, I share the, the idea that, thank you and Stacy for attending, but I, I do want to get on the record. Several of us wanted to attend, but they wanted to keep it limited, so, whereas I'm glad you went, I still, like Jeremiah, would have preferred all of us to be able to hear at once. But I know you tried your best, and thank you for attending.
Then it would have had to been a public meeting and gotten anything, so that's the problem.
Yeah, exactly.
I, I think we should say that was Mark Dyer, Councilman.
Traveling, right, so that, that is Mark Dyer, so thanks for pointing that out. Okay, any other comments? All right, okay, great. Okay, so then, let's see, our next update is the treasures report. So Craig, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everyone. Hopefully you've had a chance to, uh, look at the March Treasury Report that was put out last week, and, uh, hopefully, uh, if you have any questions, obviously let me know. Uh, it was a fairly quiet month, uh, good or bad. Uh, the revenues were pretty low. We did get in a couple, uh, distributions. We got a little bit of the real estate. Taxes came in about 13 grand. Uh, we did get some highway user revenue. Uh, I think I mentioned that last meeting, but, uh, that came in about 30 grand. Of course, we're still, still low there, still about 60% down from what we're projecting. So hopefully, yeah, by the end of the year, that will pick up. Uh, in terms of expenses, pretty much everything's tracking as what we would expect at this time. Uh, we had a couple, like, higher-than-usual type expenses, uh, one-offs that maybe, or maybe not, you were expecting. Uh, we finally got around to paying Howard County for our share of the, uh, parking improvement at the South Branch Park. Uh, that was 50 grand. Also, we had to pay BG&E, uh, for the power hookups with the splash pad. I think, again, that was discussed possibly in the past, but finally had to pay that, and that was about 30 grand. And then finally, uh, some invoices were paid for the de-icing supplies I knew was coming, but it took us this long to finally get all the invoices to pay, and that was about 18 grand worth. So, that should be all done, and hopefully there'll be no more snow, so we won't have any more issues there. So it'll be all done. Uh, other than that, like I said, it was, it was a pretty calm month, and everything was pretty, pretty much as expected and pretty slow. Uh, so for this time, if anyone has any questions, feel, uh, free to shoot it, or not.
Any questions for Craig? Okay, all right, Craig, well, thank you for.
I'll make a motion to approve the March 2021 Treasury Report.
Second.
We've got a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the treasurer's report is approved.
Thanks, everyone, appreciate it.
Thanks, Craig. And, uh, that brings us to you, Chief, you're up, the public safety report.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Evening, Chief.
We're going to talk about the, uh, public safety report covering March 15th through April 4th. As you can see, uh, 519 total events, so it was somewhat busy, three-week period. Uh, a few of the highlights, uh, nine assist other agency, 20 foot patrols. I'm glad to see the officers are getting out more and conducting foot patrols. Uh, 316 patrol checks, uh, 43 traffic enforcement initiatives. Again, a total of 519 events for the three-week period. Later, uh, in your packet, you'll see, uh, we had, we handled 15 incident reports during this same time running. And I've already addressed a few questions about some of those, but if anybody else has any, any questions about any of those incidents, I'd be more than happy to address them now.
I actually have a question, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, report number four-six. Um, it's Reese, with respect to the vehicle parked on the cul-de-sac at Cedar.
Yeah.
Um, was it just ticketed, or was it towed?
Uh, there was no tag on it, so, um, we put a, um, a notice that we were going to tow it. We give violators 10 days to remove it, and thankfully, uh, we were able to speak to the owner, and it was removed within the 10-day period, so.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. Any questions, any other questions for the chief on anything? I didn't have any questions on this. Uh, I was just, noticed we had a bunch of incidents where we could have handed out the book, and then I didn't see it in there this time, like, to hand out the guide, the.
I knew you were going to get me on that, Mayor.
Right.
They are doing a great job of handing that out, most, most cases, and sometimes they don't, but we're going to continue to, to reinforce that, and, uh, hopefully they'll, they'll continue to hand it out when, when, when possible, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. I mean, I just think that the opioid crisis has taken such a backseat too, to COVID-19 and some of the mental health issues that people are really struggling. So, I really want to try to do everything I can to, to support the mental health side of.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We're with you on that, 100%.
If the council, I don't want to jump on in front of someone. Does anybody else have any questions about the report? Because I, there was one other I had noted and, and wanted to do that when I asked you your first question, Chief. Um, number 56, what, what kind of, uh, property destruction was done at the post office?
It was some graffiti, um, the initials MJS, MMJS, white spray paint. Again, no suspects, and doesn't really link to any of the other graffiti we've seen in the past, but I hope this is not the start of, of more tagging in our town. Um, we, we, you know, we're now opening and closing the bathrooms on the weekends, and I've, I've made sure to let the guys know, let's, let's make sure we, we, we lock them at the end of the day, even on the weekends, so that we don't give anybody an opportunity to get into those bathrooms at night and, and cause more damage. So we're going to do our very best to keep a close eye on them.
Thank you, Chief.
Welcome.
And one of, one of the, uh, discussions that's likely going to be pretty prevalent, I think, coming up, is going to be broadband and some things that can happen. And I think one of the things we really should be looking at is security in town and some more cameras and stuff like that, because I think that's really the way things are going, and I think it'll help us, uh, identify these folks that are coming and going to certain town properties and, uh, you know, this, that's when you get an opportunity to add those kind of things. And it's really, yeah, it helps for so many things, just for what's going on.
Absolutely. I would love to see cameras on Main Street. It would certainly help with our town. Allow us to monitor things real time and, uh, prevent a, a lot of issues there, so I'm completely in favor of it.
Right, so I think as we start looking at our assets, I think that's places where a- all of our town assets and places that we can start installing some of these, just for, because it really links together. Like, if something happens here, and then you pick them up on a camera there, I've seen it through law enforcement, where some of the cameras far away pick up things that, you know, and, and we heard that presentation at the MML, uh, meeting, you know, with how all the technology and things link together to help you, help you do your job, you know, so. I think we'll be looking at that soon, yeah.
I believe Westminster recently, within the last year or so, installed, uh, security cameras throughout their, their city. So, we don't have to look far to, to look for a benchmark in terms of, uh, you know, the, the right way to do that.
Yeah, the infrastructure is, is the next, the next step, right, Mayor?
Right, yeah, absolutely. So, any other questions or anything else, Chief, or you?
Now, just, uh, real briefly, our, our field training with our new officer, Officer Darby's going well. In fact, uh, he will be starting on his own this week, so, uh, kudos to, uh, Officer Betcher for doing a great job of field training. And I did want to let you know that one of our officers was exposed to two positive COVID subjects, uh, last week. Thankfully, uh, he had both of the shots, and so there's been no symptoms. And so we're, we're grateful that we were able to get those vaccination shots, or this very well could have resulted in one of our officers being sick.
I'm glad, I'm glad everybody's okay, and I'm glad to have Officer Darby. So that was a great job, it was a great, uh, acquisition, so thank you for that. You've been working hard on getting the best people.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, so let's see, that brings us to our next item, uh, council committee reports. So, let's see, we'll start with you, Stacy, we'll get.
Sounds good. All right, uh, thank you. From Sykesville Park and Rec's perspective, we, um, have not met since our last town council meeting, but we did have a very successful clogging event. We actually had around 60 volunteers, if you count all the little ones that were, uh, in, in foot. About 30, 35 adults, and, uh, the children spent most of their time picking up other persons cigarette butts. We actually filled, or I should say, the, the volunteers filled 30 mason jars, uh, with cigarette butts that were at one point on the ground around, that was just on Main Street, Oklahoma Avenue, Sandusky, and many of which were right around our, our, our own assets here in town, um, public spaces. So, I was, uh, excited to teach the kids about, um, how bad, uh, smoking is, but how bad the cigarette butts are for our environment, and where they ultimately end up when they lay on the ground in a downpour. There were 30 mason jars filled and 30 bags of trash actually collected, with respect to, uh, the, the litter that was collected on, um, River Road, on West Friendship Road, um, and actually on, on, uh, the Trash Troopers, uh, who were our partners in this, in this particular event, covered, uh, the east and west sides of, or I should say, the shoulders of 32. And, um, but anyway, all in all, there were 100 people involved in the event. We had, uh, some volunteers actually run our booth, um, and they were, um, uh, a couple different church organizations. So, anyway, it was very, very successful, and it was a great, uh, educational opportunity for all involved, and, uh, just. And just want to give a shout out to our volunteers, to the Downtown Sykesville Connection, and specifically our Keep Sykesville Beautiful affiliation and our Spark volunteers.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks to everybody who participated in that. That's pretty awesome, man. Get all those butts up. I clean up my business where we, we have butts and there's butts all the time. So it is, it is annoying and it's persistent. The smokers smoke lots. So, okay, um, let's see. Al, you're next on the screen.
There we go. Sorry about that. All right. Let's start. Let me pull up the minutes to the meeting. I'm just going to go through. We had a, we had a merchants meeting, March twenty-sixth. They talked about quite a few things. Joe, you were invited to the next meeting to talk about the lights going across Main Street. They were talking about the Main Street gift card program that the DSC is starting up. It's kind of like a credit card, but it's just for merchants downtown. They had a lot of questions about that. They talked about the plogging event, Stacy, and I, I hope that the merchants were excited to see you guys down there.
They were, and I actually, not to interrupt you, well, it is interrupt you. Sorry, Al. I failed to say during my report that the merchants also participated in our event. They offered coupons.
Coupons, five dollar coupons.
Yeah. So you'll touch on that. I, I was, I should have said that. Thank you.
That's all right. They, that's just like, again, they were just planning it, so they were excited about that. And sixty people, that's awesome. I'm sure they were just thrilled to see him down there. There was some art and wine festival updates, just some talking about that. There's a, there was some info about a sunshine committee for Piney Run Elementary. Just asking for some gift cards. They talked a little bit about Character Night, which was May twenty-first, but because the Art and Wine Festival is going to happen, I think they're going to switch that out till July, because they, that was like the weekend. It was really close to the Art and Wine Festival and they just, they just thought it'd be too many events down there within a short period of time. Then they also talked about the June thirteenth Pride event that's going on down there. Talked about some more dates, about Harry Potter Night, just stuff like that that's coming up later in the, later in the summer and then the fall. That, that was the merchant meeting. The next merchant meeting is the last Friday in April, which is, I don't want to give it the wrong date. April thirtieth, April thirtieth. Also coordinated a, April seventh, we had a merchant meeting with Commissioner Rothstein and the mayor and myself. There was about eight merchants that showed up, really just kind of roundtable with Rothstein. They kind of got away from Main Street. We, they, a lot of discussion about the Piney Run Park and what they were doing with the dam on that. So a little bit of talk about COVID grant funds coming through the county. It was just a good conversation. And that's about all I got.
So Al, with you bringing up the Piney Run issue.
Oh, I did not bring that up. I did not bring that up.
They brought that up, but since you brought it up tonight. It's a nice dicey topic to, to discuss. Is this something, it's, it's not in the town limits? And yet is this something that the town would weigh in on? Because it does have a potential impact on, you know, the, the beauty of the area. I just don't know because I haven't been involved in this discussion in the deep past.
So it was, it was asked, it was asked by a merchant about it. And basically, from what I can tell, the commissioner said the state ordered the county to fix the dam. And that's what they're going to do. So we really don't have anything to do with it. They're using state money to fix it. But there was, there was a long, lengthy discussion, so. But yeah, I, I didn't bring that up.
But the good news is it's not, they're not going to do what most people were opposed to. They're just going to do the maintenance that was required by the state. I think a lot of, there was a lot of talk about an option two, which was to drain the whole thing, turn it into a reservoir, sort of really changed the scope of where we are now. So I think they heard the public feedback and decided to go with the maintenance option. And things should remain the same for, for the foreseeable future. So.
Yes.
Yeah. So I think we're in good shape as far as retaining it in its current state for the foreseeable future, at least.
So again, since it came up, you know, I'll just throw a few more things. I know you want me to keep, stop talking about it. I will in a minute. It's one of these things where, where maybe it makes some sense for us to offer an opinion from the town's perspective as we contemplate these sorts of issues moving into the future. So, you know, it's, it's past issue maybe for this round, but maybe something that we bring up in the future if, when any additional things start to happen. It, you know, one of the things that were, I'm sorry, one of the things that were really, you know, it, it seems to be really going in the right direction right now as in terms of real estate property values and whatnot for the community. And one of the big draws is that area. It's, it's absolutely beautiful there. And of course, all of us think that. So sorry, Stacy, where are you going to try to get in there?
Yeah, no, thank you for bringing it up, the Piney Run thing. I, I actually totally couldn't agree with you more about us. Maybe we actually missed an opportunity to, to provide our opinion as a, as an elected body of individuals. We are the only elected body in, in, in the Freedom District and, and it's Piney Run is, is home to all of us. And, and I know that the efforts that were put forth by the individuals that started the, the, the Facebook page and the administrator of that page who mentioned, who actually spoke in the comments section of our meeting two weeks ago. I've reached, I, I plan on, on reaching out to the group and, and letting them know that, that we really do need to kind of have an advisory committee of sorts with, with things like this. We need to have a, a group of people that includes, you know, some of the town council along with those that, that aren't part of an incorporated town that all have these things or concerns in common and are all stakeholders. So I couldn't agree with you more, Councilman.
All right, let's move on.
Yeah. So well, we'll, we'll move on, but we did talk to the county commissioner because what happened on this really was it came up way too fast, right? And we didn't have time to respond to it because we weren't notified about it since it wasn't into the town. So, you know, this is how it came out, like, and nobody, even the public, like, the only reaction isn't a, a knee jerk Facebook page. So one of the things that we had a discussion with the commissioner was, was to make sure that we're informed and there's a process for letting citizens know about these things, including us. And he agreed and said, you know, it was, it did come up sort of, they didn't, they didn't look at it. You know how when planning happens, sometimes certain little parts of the county don't anticipate public input and, you know, for the planning commission and for the stuff like that, like, they don't anticipate the ramifications of formalities, you know, like paperwork, business parts. So he got it and I, I think going forward, there's going to be way more notice. And, and at that point, certainly the mayor and town council would be able to weigh in and, and send in an opinion on something like this.
But that's my point exactly, Mayor. We weren't informed. That therein lies the problem. And I know that you've had a conversation with Commissioner Rothstein, but the point is that if there were a body in place, an advisory council of sorts, then there'd be no opportunity for that information not to find its way to, to a group of people that would, would want to know about it. And that just, we're only part of that equation is my point. And I wouldn't have called the Facebook page a knee jerk reaction. I think it was a, a very strong effort on, on a part of almost two thousand people to stand up and say, no, thank you. But in any way, that's.
No, I didn't mean to be knee jerk, but I'm saying they had to quickly do that without proper preparation is my point. Like, it wasn't like it was thawed out and then people were notified and then they were, they had to, like, as soon as they found out, they had to try to mobilize. And yeah, I mean, they did a great job in such a short, but it shouldn't be like that. Like, there should be plenty of time for public input and that kind of stuff. So, so I think the commissioner got it. I think, you know, they'll, they're going to let us know, obviously, because we hate to get blindsided by that too, because it makes us, you know, like you said, people are asking us, everybody was asking us about it and we didn't have any information on where the two options came from, how it all started, where we were in the process. Yeah. So, so yeah, so to your point, Jeremiah, I think we're, what, what we tried to get out of that conversation was better communication going forward, so.
That's great.
I think we'll get that, yeah.
Yeah, and that's kind of how the merchant meeting went as soon as they brought that up. So it's like this meeting's going on right here. That's all I got. I could, I end my report, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thanks, Al. All right. And then so that brings you up next, Jeremiah. Anything from the Raincliff folks?
So no meetings with Raincliff, but one, there's two other things I wanted to mention. One's a question for you, Mayor, and the other is, I'll start off with the other one. The other one is an effort that I do think that we did do the right way from a communication perspective, and that's the comprehensive plan. I just sent my comments earlier today. Mark, I wanted to tell you that I thought that the plan was very good. Joe, the same thing. Jana, the same thing. I, I thought it was very comprehensive. I added a couple of thoughts in there for you all to contemplate and I will look forward to the public debate in reference to that when, when that comes up, I think, next month. And then the other topic was more of a question for you, Mayor. I was looking at highway user revenues. We had our last Maryland Municipal Legislative Committee meeting last Wednesday. We have a closeout meeting, not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday. And when I, when it was asked a couple of times to the folks at MML about highway user revenue, and of course, it hasn't moved in the House. The, they'd asked us to stand down in terms of pushing anybody. And I didn't know if you'd heard anything of that moving forward, positive or negative from the mayor community.
No, I have not heard anything. So today would have probably been the eleventh hour. So I don't know where we are yet with that. So tomorrow, I, I can reach out and get an update tomorrow and see what happened, but we all should probably have the scoop by tomorrow, I guess.
Right. Yeah, okay. I just.
I have not heard an update like usually if there's going to be some action. Like you said, they'll reach out to us and say, you know, reach out and, and contact the speaker or, you know, the, and let them know. But I haven't heard anything like that, so.
So even if it doesn't pass, I did get through the Senate, the State Senate, and it got through, I think it was forty-seven to zero. And so that's a good step in the right direction. My guess is, is that next year it'll be a priority again if it doesn't pass this year. And even if it did pass this year, and this is just FYI to everybody here, is that the bill that was moving forward was to remove the sunset. It wasn't to increase the funding. I've mentioned that a couple of times, but just as a reminder to everybody. And of course, this is the thing that Craig was talking about earlier, where we're looking to get the funding to repair our roads in our town. So that's, that's why it's important to everybody. It's not just some fancy term called highway user revenue, but it, it actually gives us the money to make sure that everybody wrote, everyone's roads are in tip-top shape. Thanks, Mayor. That's, that's all I had.
No, thank you. I appreciate it. And hopefully it went down to the wire with some horse trading to get it through. Because really, the, like you said, to remove that provision that's keeping us funded at these current levels is really important and that's what we're shooting for. So I'm hoping with the additional COVID funding, they'll be more likely to approve it. And I think that's what the message felt. Anna, you're up. Historic District.
We did not have a meeting since our last mayor and town council. Our next scheduled meeting is supposed to be Thursday, Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. And I do believe that we have applications. Carrie, can you confirm that?
We do.
Okay. So our meeting's going to be seven o'clock Thursday, Tuesday, on April the twenty-seventh here via Zoom. I will give you an update after that happens and I believe that's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then Leo, you're up next.
The DSC board did not meet since our last meeting, but we are meeting again next Monday, April nineteenth for the board meeting. But otherwise, Julie and the Downtown Sykesville Committee has been very busy with spring coming along. Two new businesses are now on Main Street. The first one is Natural Aesthetic Med Spa, seventy-five twenty-four Main Street, Suite one oh two. And then also a grand opening this Saturday. Anybody who wants to pop by and welcome Jen Lipton to Sykesville, new business title Salt. It has their grand opening this Saturday, April seventeenth, seventy-six oh two West Main Street. Julie is participating currently in a Main Street Now virtual conference. Farmer's Market is getting set to open up May sixteenth. And notes on that, there's been a COVID compliant model approved and there'll be weekly specials and details available on the market Facebook page. For May twenty-second, the Art and Wine Festival or the Wine Festival or whatever it was going to be is no longer viable with the ongoing COVID issues. Julie has been working with Joe and the chief and Public Works for a limited event called Game of Maine, which is going to be video games on Main Street. Joe might be able to talk about that better than I can because he's been more involved in the planning. But we're no alcohol event, sort of a family friendly event type this year due to COVID. With regard to green initiatives, Main, the Main Street Garden was cleaned up April tenth. Schoolhouse Garden is going to be cleaned up April eighteenth and then planting will take place in May. Julie's been busy with grants. As you remember, there was the Maryland Grant for Rent Reimbursement for Small Businesses. All that has been dispersed, six, over sixty-two thousand dollars was distributed to ten small businesses in town to help them with their business needs and rent. She's also applying for a Keep Sykesville Beautiful Littering Program for five thousand dollars. I submitted an application to M and T Bank to sponsor the hopefully twenty-twenty-one Craft Beer Festival. Application to AARP for placemaking of Christmas lights. And I believe that is everything. Each committee is doing their work. Economic Restructuring is working on a projection mapping research. And we're good creation of Main Street Party Packages Promotion Committee is working with the merchant groups and Liquor Board to develop the, hopefully Beer Festival in the fall. And they're looking at a winter golf tournament at the length of Chaladon. And Design Committee is still working on the coloring book and installation of the Sykesville Ghost Sign. That's everything.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, um, let's see. Is Mark, Mark dropped off, Denny? I didn't see.
No, I'm here. I'm in the midway, I'm in the Midway Service Plaza off the bike. Yeah, I'm just sitting here. I don't have my notes, but Joe, who attended the meeting, I asked him to pitch hit for me. So take over.
Can do. So yeah, the, the Planning Commission met a week ago on, I guess that was April fifth. Most of their discussion centered around the comprehensive plan draft. Again, they had received that a month prior, so this was an opportunity for them to get all their questions and concerns kind of on the record. Most of the discussion centered around the municipal growth area, or let's just say lack thereof municipal growth area. The, the two thousand and ten plan had quite a substantial area identified for future growth. And during our conversations, at least with the advisory committee that was set up to help guide the comp plan process, you know, we, we made a decision to, to eliminate most of those areas. The Planning Commission wants us to go back and kind of reconsider that and, and we're actually working with our consultant now to figure out a good way to maybe weave that back into the document, just to give us some more flexibility on the, on the growth areas. We, we don't really, there, there hasn't been a lot of proposals for, for any of these areas. But again, if they're not in the comp plan, then it makes it a little more difficult to annex it should, should a proposal come forward. So again, we're working on that. There was several comments regarding Warfield and just making sure that whatever is in the, the comprehensive plan regarding Warfield, that it's clear that there's still a process that they have to go through if they want to change anything out there and really just clarifying the fact that, you know, anything that changes with regard to their, their PEC plan would still have to go through, you know, Historic District would still have to go through Planning Commission and would still have to come back to council. That just because something might be mentioned in the comp plan doesn't give them the ability to proceed on that. And then zoning was, was also discussed. One of the recommendations in the comp plan is, is a hybrid or a form-based type zoning recommendation. And they just asked that maybe just a, a comment that, yes, we need to revise our zoning ordinance so that if we do decide to maybe not pursue hybrid or form-based, form-based zoning, that we still have the option to do that. And again, it doesn't, wouldn't require a comprehensive plan amendment in case we decided not to do that. So those were the, the highlights of the, the, the comp plan discussion. The county also gave updates on their spring water and wastewater master plan. Um, uh, the county also gave updates on their uh spring water and wastewater master plan update and then gave an update on the uh concept plan that the county is reviewing on the project on Buttercup Road there at Buttercup and, and Raincliff. Uh, so again, that's a project that we're keeping a close eye on just cause it does impact the town. Uh, uh, cause it's right there next to the uh, the, the Raincliff subdivision.
Any word on the sidewalk, Joe? Have we heard anything in reference to that about the potential of the developer, including sidewalk on that, I guess it's the south side?
Uh, I mean, the request was made, the comment was made during their uh, uh Technical Review Committee uh that was held on, I believe it was March twenty-second, that they wanted to make sure that, one, that connection was still gonna be possible regardless of what they do on site and, you know, if they're willing to partner with, uh, with the county to go ahead and make that connection. As far as I know, there's been no, uh, there's been really no communication, you know, back on that, that, you know, the, their goal now is to really take all those comments and then rework the concept plan so that they can continue down the process. But as soon as we have an update or if they, if there is a response on, on any of those uh, uh, those requests that came out of that TRC meeting, um, we'll make sure that they get the dispersed to, to the Raincliff folks and to council.
Yep. Thank, thank you. And just for anyone who's watching this now or later, that would create a connection that's mostly walkable. It's a tough hill, but it's mostly walkable from the town all the way to Freedom Park uh via sidewalk, which would be a big win for everybody in town.
And then not, uh, kind of veering off from Planning Commission a little bit, I did want to mention uh, just to kind of pile on to some of the, 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 the parks uh, 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 events that have happened that have been very successful.
Do it, Joe.
No, I'm doing it. I'm taking it.
No, no, I was gonna do it at the end. I asked Jenna for numbers before my report was over and I didn't get them. Can I do it, please?
Okay.
It was so much fun to watch the kids have so much fun. And I need to give so many props to the Spark.
It was a good one, yeah.
Commission. They are uh some of the most creative people. Um, and love our park so much that they, they made these new plans, revised these plans for COVID. Um, and, and made a scavenger hunt and called it a scab eggger hunt. And uh, the kiddos needed to find, uh, search and find for two-dimensional eggs with a letter on the back of them so that they could uh write a word with those letters. And the only way to write the word was to find all the eggs. Um, uh, and I guess we had thirty-one submissions for, for guesses and of those, they were, uh, the names were pulled for two winners, right, Jana? And uh, and I have those names if I could, if I can read them. Um, it is the Dean family and the, I'm gonna probably s- say this wrong. Valenti family and the Dean family. So those are the lucky winners. Um, I know they were notified. I'm not sure if they've, they've gotten back to Jana, but there's two lovely prizes waiting for them at the townhouse, right?
They picked up their prizes already. And picture of one of the families is on the town's um Facebook page.
Wonderful. And I think this one's got staying power, this event. Uh, it's a definitely something that um will be fun whether people have to stay apart or not, um, and, and keep, you know, keep six feet apart. So this was, this was fun for everybody. We got a lot of great feedback and kudos again to the Smart, the Spark Commission members because uh the commissioners over there are um, are doing it up and always keeping things lively and, and introducing the parks to those families that may have never been to any of them before or all of them. So this, this got them out. So, Joe, I'm sorry, I just needed to do it.
No, no, it was good. We wanted to make sure that that got recognized because again, it was, i- it was one of those events that uh, you know, we had to come up with somewhat last minute and, and Spark really came through. And I, I think the, the, the members of the community that participated in it really did enjoy it. So I think Stacy's right in that it, it does have staying power. It's probably gonna be something we do every year now.
And if, and if somebody can return the missing dimensional eggs.
Not supposed to take the eggs. You're supposed to find them and leave them there.
Yeah, for, for Janet, uh, cause she was chilly that day. She was out there helping Al coordinate that, so uh, and I got one of the plants and I planted it and it has germinated. I don't know what it's gonna become, but uh, we'll see what happens. But, all right.
We're gonna assume those three eggs disappeared, um, because three little ones pocketed them. I'm sure it wasn't delicious. But uh, Brian Tross uh from, from Spark actually handmade all of them and made them weatherproof so we can use them again next year. He'll have to replace those three that went missing unless they come, they land back on the, the porch steps at the townhouse.
We had a rogue Easter bunny. They might pop back up once they realize that they're supposed to, for next year. We need them back, so.
Thanks for doing that, Stacy.
Somebody got excited.
Shout out to Janet though, for sure. She put a lot of extra time into this one. Thanks, Janet.
Thank you.
All right, so I think I covered everybody. Is that it, Joe, for, you, you're good?
I think that's it.
Okay, all right. And then um, so uh Gate House, nothing, nothing new going on at the Gate House at the current moment, but do check out the website. It's thegatehousmuseum.com. Lots of great stuff on there. Don't forget to check out the last exhibit, the George Leakin's exhibit, and I think uh Jack's working on some additional exhibits coming soon, so. Um, and for the schoolhouse, um, I know we got the garden, got the stuff fixed so the garden can function down there, right? So the, we'll be working on the uh garden down there, but the schoolhouse is still closed currently due to COVID nineteen, so um, they're working on that. And then we're working on getting the repair fixed for, for some wood that we've had a little bit of a challenge getting done, but we're gonna get it fixed. Um, and then uh, just to point out, so I thought, I thought this guy was a super plogger, but it turns out it was Dave Lewis from St. Paul's United Church on the same day as the plugging event, who I wanted to give a shout out to him, cause he uh, he got three uh full-size trash bags of trash off of uh, from Obrecht to Third, um, all the way down to Harlan Lane, cleaned up uh out there, so with his Adopt a Road program. So uh, wanted to give a shout out to Dave for all that work. And um, I think that's about it, so.
I, I, shout out to Dave to call us and let us know all the details, the before and after pictures. I know he, he said he would be doing these kinds of things that
Yep.
ju- jump on with uh, uh Sykesville, Keep Sykesville Beautiful affiliate, so we can take some credit for his hard work.
There you go. So, yep, it's awesome. Yeah, and he did send a couple of pictures of his smiling face by the roadside, so. But at any rate, uh, so yeah, so thanks, Dave, for that. Uh, and I think that's it, right? So we covered everything, so. Nothing else, right, Joe? We're good?
I think we're good.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Lots of seconds. All those in favor?
Hi.
All right, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you. We'll see you at the next meeting for the.
Good night, everybody.